Besides making a, you know, initial motion and a secondary motion, don't they have to...
We want all the big guys, we can find this.
Some things whether they're gonna pass.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, like take down that whole CBS area.
And they get a parking lot.
Wait, this is such an emergency, right?
I was afraid I'm gonna like fix this and like the whole room's gonna shut down now. It's only one block.
Fuck you.
Not yet, Scott.
I know, I don't know where else to do it.
Right, you don't want like lakefront, you know, Johnny's is about to fall in the lake.
He's popping up everywhere.
I just wanna know how to address this.
Yeah, this is the one that's spinning. We approved that one already.
Yeah.
That was, they just haven't built it yet. Amazing how much time it's taken them to get to the point of actually building something.
On that?
Yep, so when they're ready to make a motion.
Coffee Bakery is gonna make.
Okay, got it, that'll be my new...
It's gotta just be a party.
Gloria Jean's.
Low cost, venture, car washes.
Guy won't hit the name on it, okay.
Doesn't look very busy.
Gotcha, okay. Okay, now I see, okay. I see, thank you.
Hey, how's Gloria Jean's doing?
Mr. Brian, how are ya?
Good, and yourself, Sheri?
Hanging in there.
That's what we like to hear.
Preliminary, so this is a preliminary one.
I go, when I've been there a few times with Craig, we've been like the... So, it's just, I want it to be successful.
That's preliminary, that's not out of order.
This time, I'd like to call the meeting of the Charter Township of Van Buren Planning Commission to order, and at this time, if we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And could we have a roll call, please? Here.
Commissioner Jireh. Commissioner Paul.
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Creel.
Here.
Commissioner Grant.
Here.
Treasurer Bud.
Okay, thank you. We have in front of us an agenda. Do I have a motion concerning the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Motion to appro- motion in support to approve the agenda as presented, any comments on it? Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Aye? Any opposed? Next up, we have the minutes. Before us, we have the minutes of the regular meeting from August 28th, 2024. Do I have a motion concerning the minutes?
To the Chair, make a motion, we approve the minutes from the regular meeting of August 28th, 2024.
Support. Motion to approve the minutes from August 28th, 2024. Do we have any discussion on that? Seeing none? Uh, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, we don't, don't see any correspondence or announcements before us, or a public hearing, we're on told business. We have item number one. Case 24005, Silken Gold Sheets Premier Dequinder 2 LLC Special Land Use Request Recommendation. A request by applicant Silken Gold, on behalf of property owner Premier Dequinder 2 LLC to construct the gasoline fueling station, convenience store, and drive-through restaurant, including a 6,139 square foot convenience store and drive-through restaurant building, and a 4,786.7 square foot canopy with 12 fueling pumps. The site is Zoned C1, General Business District. Gasoline filling stations and drive-through establishments require special land use approval and a public hearing with the planning commission in the C1 district in accordance with Article 12, Chapter 3 of the Van Buren Township zoning ordinance. The location, the site includes 15.95 acres of property on parcels V12583041990001001, at the southwest corner of Ekor's Road and Haggerty Road. Do we have a presentation by the township's staff? Director Power.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight before you is the revisiting of the Silken Gold's Sheets/Premier Dequinder 2 LLC preliminary site plan and special land use request. As you'll recall, on July 10th, there was a public hearing for this project involving a Sheets, gas station, convenience store, and drive-through. And at that time, a public hearing comments were received, and a significant amount of discussion was had on a number of items. And at that time, our planning consultant had gone through some reporting on the special land use request, but no action was taken on either request in order for some additional information to be provided. There was some additional information that was provided in the last month, give or take maybe a couple of weeks. There have been some new submittals provided by the applicant. Most recently, we've received a driveway exhibit showing the overall location of the site in relation to the site and parcels across the road, as well as the overall picture of the parcel fabric of this site. We've received a municipal response letter from Stonefield Engineering. There's a nine-page architectural package from Convenience Architecture and Design PC, a letter describing a market need, the market need for the Sheets gas station from Alexander Sowicki dated August 30th of 2024, a memo describing the Eagle permitting and approval process from ASTI Environmental dated 8/22/24, a 21-page civil plan set dated August 30th, which includes two survey plan sheets from Chemtech, a geotechnical report from Materials Testing Consultants, and a 77-page revised traffic impact study dated July 21st, and a five-page lighting plan that was resubmitted. And more recently, which is the purpose for some of the printouts that you have before you tonight, there were some additional submittals from the applicant on Monday with some responses to some of the newer items and the most recent staff reporting from our planning consultant with McKenna, and additionally, a, an updated version of the exhibit drawing that I mentioned earlier that has the overall parcel configuration shown for the site. So primarily, for both requests on tonight's agenda, I'm going to defer a lot of the detailed comments to our planning consultant, and then for the preliminary site plan, additionally, our engineering consultant. I will just go over some of the procedural overview and some of the items that have been brought back forward for your consideration. Again, there was some confusion on the scope of the project at the July 10th meeting, and the applicant has provided the exhibit drawing that I mentioned with the intent of clarifying that. And so, here on the screen, you can see the site configuration is the entirety of a over 15-acre combination of two parcels, the eastern portion of which will be disturbed as part of this, what they call project site or area of impact. Additionally, just to recap some of those tabling condition items and summarize them, the planning commission had sought clarity regarding the site acreage and parcel configuration, which I believe will be mentioned in our reports tonight as well, but that is something that relates to the last slide I just showed. There's a revised traffic impact study that was requested to show more current data in response to some of the information provided in a recent Ashley Capital traffic study from recent years. And so, revised traffic impact study was submitted, and there's a newer comment in our Township Engineers Report regarding that. Updates regarding vehicular stacking, there is still some, somewhat of a proposal by the applicant to make a pitch to have a stacking configuration based on what they see in their data as the need for stacking, particularly behind the menu board. But there were some additional, there's some additional information provided regarding stacking, which will be mentioned a little bit later, and is also mentioned in the planner's report. And the last item that was an official tabling condition of that meeting was an analysis of the state of Michigan requirements for wetland impacts because of some of the comments that were raised at that July 10th meeting. I mentioned a 8/22 date, but there's a, the actual letter, most current letter from ASTI Environmental is dated September 6th, which speaks to the wetland impacts and the process for going through the wetland mitigation for the site. There's also some general comments in the Engineers Report about the wetland issue as well. So that's just kind of a retracing from the tabling that occurred in July, kind of why we're back reviewing the site tonight. In addition to these comments, there are a significant number of other items that were brought up in reports over the course of the preliminary phase of review that will also be addressed. With that, we have with us tonight Laura Ha from McKenna Associates, filling in for tonight on behalf of Vidya Krishnan, who is unavailable. So we have Laura Ha as a vice president with McKenna, and she's going to give an overview first of the special land use report, and then at the direction of the Chair, you typically would have action on special land use, and then preliminary site plan review, or you may combine some of the reporting, that can be some of your discretion. But let's, I would recommend hearing from the McKenna Associates Planning Consultant on the special land use request first.
Ms. Ha?
Thank you, good evening Commissioners.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. As Director Power summarized, on July 10th, there was a public hearing held on the requested special land use, and my colleague from McKenna did detail portions of the special land use review. And at that time, it was presented that the special land use criteria of the township zoning ordinance could be met for both the gas station and the drive-through. Since that time, the applicant has submitted revised plans to address some previous concerns that were raised at the meeting. One important item to note in our review is that the balance of the site, which is illustrated on the new exhibit now, that will not be developed, will not be placed in a deed or conservation easement. The applicant has stated in their written narrative dated September 9th that they will work with the township staff to determine a cross-access easement location in the event that the western portion of the site is developed in the future. So, that item, we feel, is addressed to our satisfaction provided that cross-access easement is secured. The recommendation is noted on page four of our review, which is packet page 33. And it states, "As the proposed uses meet the general standards for consideration of special land use approval and the specific conditions related to drive-through and gasoline filling stations, we recommend the planning commission recommend approval of the gas station and drive-through restaurant to the Township Board of Trustees, subject to compliance with the ordinance, lighting standards, and contingent on future site plan approval." If you have any questions on the specifics of the special land use, I'm happy to address those. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lubick, do you have anything on the, for special land use?
No engineering review for special land use. I'll review my letter with you guys before the site plan, preliminary site plan approval portion.
Okay, thank you. Director Power, do you have anything else for us then?
I do not.
Okay, planning Commissioners. Presentation by the applicant. I'm sorry.
Good evening, members of Van Buren Township Planning Commission. Thanks for having us back tonight. We're excited to be here to go over some of these additional items. I would like to take just a couple of moments to go through a few more reminders of the Sheets brand and who we are.
Could you introduce yourself for us, please?
Of course. David Bruckelmeier with Sheets, 39300 West 12 Mile Road, Farmington Hills, Michigan. Through here. So again, Sheets was founded in 1952 in central Pennsylvania. We are still family-owned, family-operated, with no franchise locations today. So we operate over 750 locations. And just to reiterate that fact, we have 16 family members that are Sheets family members that are actively making decisions within our business today. In fact, I report to a Sheets family member. They're very detailed, they're very involved in the business. I just want to reiterate that we are truly still family-run, family-operated. I want to note a few things about this particular project. This represents over a $9 million investment, probably bordering on a $10 million investment. We are very happy to make these local investments, they do wonderful things. They increase tax assessments on property. We employ local contractors, local engineers, local traffic consultants. We are going to hire 30 to 35 full-time positions for a site like this. So it's a pretty significant investment into the community, you know, on a local basis. In addition to that, Sheets invest in, you know, things like Special Olympics on a national, state, and local level. We have an organization called Sheets for the Kids. It's something where we donate to 16 kids in need at Christmas, Christmas time per store. That turns into an incredible number of people that we impact, as well as donating to local schools and other organizations of that nature. A couple of things, we just, we want to highlight our culture. So one thing that came down literally just this week, Newsweek named Sheets one of the best retailers in the country to work for. In fact, we are the second-best retailer in the nation to work for. I think that's something that really speaks to our culture and the quality that we bring into communities and into places that we operate. With that, we're gonna move straight into the site details. And again, this request is for a special land use, both for fuel, drive-through, and a preliminary site plan approval. Last time we spoke, we had quite a few outstanding items, you had some questions on it. We're gonna go through each of these items in more detail. This is just a general breakout, and then of course, if you have additional questions, we would be happy to answer that at the end of the presentation. One of the biggest outstanding items that we had was a little bit of miscommunication on what the parcel assemblage situation was, as well as the developed area of said lot. So here, you can see that there are two parcels bisected by the dotted line going plan east and west. You know, upon closing upon the property and upon approval from the city and engineering, we will combine both of those parcels. Then what will happen is, you can see this red line vertically on the screen, that will be the limits of our disturbance and improvement on the property. We do not intend any further improvements upon the property to the west, only to the east of the red line, which is what you see in this application today. So, that, we can revisit that item a little more if you have any other questions. I think that just generally lays out what we're doing with these parcels and how we're developing the property. Just to reiterate, staff mentioned that we are willing to grant cross-access easement. The proper location of that, we want to work through the process a little bit further with staff and finalize the site plan and then grant an easement. That's not something we can do at this time because we don't, do not own the property. But that would be a condition of us granting that easement prior to engineering approval. So we would not be able to start the project until we do grant that easement. A matter was brought up of the drive-through. Something I'd like to note about our drive-through, it truly is an amenity to customers. It is not the main attraction of our site. It is something that is just a convenience that we like to offer. To point that out, we'll go over on the next slide. We have a very low number of customers that use this, this drive-through per hour. So it's something that's very low volume, nothing like a Starbucks or Chick-fil-A, not anywhere near that type of realm. And one of the points that was brought up by the planning team was that they recommended moving the order point a little further north, and that would create a couple of issues. I'll give you a visual representation on the next slide. So if you look at that center picture, you can see that there is a vertical touchscreen. And one of the things that's really critical about using that touchscreen is that customers are able to pull straight up to it. Whereas with a traditional squawk box, it's something you talk to, there's a little bit more variation of where a customer can pull up. With this type of application, they need to be able to pull up very close and straight to it so they can reach out their window and actually touch the screen. And that's how we achieve the not having someone talk back and forth. So that's something that, that we are asking to not have that shifted north so that our customers can pull straight up to the touchscreen and not have to, you know, maneuver around a curve to get to a touchscreen. It's gonna be really difficult for customers to navigate around a curve, get close enough, scrape their rims. We don't want to do something like that. So we are making that request not to shift that to the north. And just to reiterate, at our busiest locations, we have about nine customers an hour at lunchtime. That is our peak hour, so it's 8.9 customers per hour. You know, the average wait time is roughly five minutes. So we're talking about being able to move something like 30 cars through a drive-through in an hour. We are providing many more stacking spaces than are truly required for this drive-through. We're very confident that this is not gonna stack out into the site. Someone would be waiting a very long time, you know, if they're stacking all the way out into the site. To go back to our traffic study, there was a couple of comments, and I think staff did a good job of reiterating that we integrated the Ashley Capital traffic information into our traffic study and updated that. That is still going to be an ongoing process through the engineering approval. We are willing to continue to work with staff, we feel that the numbers are acceptable. We feel that the access that we are requesting is very, very reasonable and safe. So we updated the numbers, I think we're gonna continue to work through until that's into final approval stage. We are comfortable with those numbers as they stand, and we're gonna continue to work with the engineering staff. And just to reiterate, a use like ours, when you look at the manuals of traffic data, we really are a traffic captureer, so we traffic cap, we capture traffic that's headed in a direction. And 70% of those cars, 75% of those cars, go back in the same direction, they make a right out. You know, when you're on your way to work, do you want to pull into a fuel station that you have to cross-traffic when you have one on your right side? Absolutely not. It's the same situation here. We really capture that traffic and put it back on the road. Wetlands, floodplains, and drainage, that was a big concern that we talked about, and there were several items we discussed. So I did want to highlight some of the steps that we've already taken to work with Eagle. So last year in August, we actually did an initial site investigation and did a wetland delineation. So we went out there, we had a professional engineering consultant go out, identify wetlands, delineate those, and then I believe, yeah, it was November, we did an Eagle site walk. So we have visited the site with Eagle to identify these wetlands. And then on the 14th of November, we actually had a pre-application meeting with Eagle. And then just recently, we've gotten to the point through engineering where we are able to actually make a full submission. So on the 5th of this month, we made a submission with a formal application to Eagle for the wetlands and the floodplain mitigation. So we are working through that process, it is very possible, and I think very, very feasible is what our engineers are telling us, to mitigate the wetlands and the floodplains that are on this site. A few landscaping items come up. We are fully able to address those with staff. You know, we need to add a few things and make a couple of modifications to the landscaping plan. We have no issue with that. We're happy to add the landscaping and make some tweaks here and there. We fully expect that through the site planning process. So we will fully comply with staff's comments on those items regarding landscaping. Lighting, so we are still working through this, and this is another final engineering item. We had a little discrepancy in interpretation of the code. So when our lighting designers designed the site, there was a couple of questions they had and a few things they didn't quite do to comply with code correctly. That's not uncommon, some of the codes are a little bit different, and they all read in different ways. And we are willing to work with staff to meet the city's, or sorry, the township's lighting requirements. So we have no issue meeting those engineering standards for lighting. One other item did come up, and this was more recent, was the screening for the propane on the east side of the property. So because we put our fuel station in the back, and we put the property up on, up on Ekor's Road, it forced us to turn the building and have customer interaction facing south instead of north, as a fuel station traditionally would. That does feature, you know, the fuel pumps in the back. It's a good thing, it's a good look, you're able to, you know, we're able to make a nice architectural look on Ekor's Road still. There is the matter of the propane facing east. So what you see in these pictures here is a store that is in existence, it's in Westerville, Ohio. And this is how we are proposing to screen the propane on the east side of the building. It features two masonry wing walls, the same construction as our building material, along with an architectural metal fence on the front to screen from the road. So we just wanted to make sure we pointed that out, it's on the elevations. It's a little bit different, difficult to interpret, but this is what in all actuality this will look like. One other item that came up that was a little bit hard for us to communicate in the last meeting was market need. So, we have business intelligence people that have done quite a bit of market research on a lot of our sites. And what that tells us is that they gather publicly available data, and then they compare it to the rest of our platform. We know the sales of our platform, we have 750 locations, so we have a lot of data we can pull from. And what that data here tells us is that this location has roughly 60% more fuel demand than most of our other sites. So, it would be in the 60th percentile. So that means that there is a pretty good fuel demand here. Moving down into the food offering, which is really the biggest offering we feel we have, it's something that's really key to our business. This is something that they see almost a 70%, a 70th percentile market need for, which means we feel that the community is underserved from a competition standpoint. There are less users than we would expect here. With the number of traffic, the number of people, we study demographics, we study incomes. It's an incredible amount of data you can pull publicly, and they do all that. We've done quite a bit of homework to demonstrate market need. And I think that's really highlighted by our willingness to spend over $9 million on a site like this. We're very confident, we've spent a lot of time driving the market, investigating data. It even comes down to literally gut feeling for some of these real estate guys that spend a lot of time out driving. So we're very confident in the market need here, that we're gonna service the community well. Just to reiterate our request, special land use for fuel and drive-through, as well as a preliminary site plan approval. And with that, we'd be very happy to answer any additional questions you may have.
Thank you. Commissioners? Questions on special land use?
I think most of the questions that we had have been answered, and I feel good about that. But, you know, I think we've got it.
Okay.
I like what I see, it's very nice, thank you, very thorough.
Ms. Chairman, my concern from the last meeting was that both drive-throughs and gas filling stations are a special use recommendation. And the parcel size has been clarified, is now 16 acres, give or take. I feel like I'm being asked to give special land use onto a parcel that's 16 acres big and only has a quarter of it developed. I'm not against granting the special land use for the developed portion, seems reasonable. It's the remaining, however many acres that is, 10 acres. I understand that you have no intent to develop it today, but we are a planning commission, and we have to think about the future, and we have to think about what could happen to the property later, if it were to change hands, or if market, market conditions were such that maybe it would be a very useful thing to have 10 extra acres of pre-approved gas stations and fast food restaurants, perfectly allowed. So I have a question for, I would direct it towards our McKenna consultant or to staff. Is there something in a, in a recommendation for special land use that could be a condition that the special land use only applied to the developed area in the plan? Is there a way to, is there a way to ensure that I'm not, for the next 30, 40 years, allowing fast food restaurants on the undeveloped parcel, which I completely believe you're not, you're not planning on developing it today, you aren't. But I have to think for the future, for the community. And I hope my question was phrased so you could understand it. Director Power, do you have a...
Sure, sure, I'd be glad to help navigate that. I think that was a good question at the last meeting, and we kind of knew what to look for at that point. When the applicant resubmitted their site plan, When the applicant resubmitted their site plan, they added a note to Sheet Five that indicates that this plan will be consistent with Section twelve point three zero eight of the Van Buren Township Zoning Ordinance. Section twelve point three zero eight is a section that refers to some of the site, special land use standards. And it speaks to that the responsibility is of the property owner to maintain the property in accordance with the approved site design on a continuing basis until the property is raised or new zoning regulations supersede the regulations based upon which the special use was granted, or until a new special approval has been obtained as a basis for modifying use or design. So they did add a comment, I don't have that comment on the screen or memorized, but it's a new note on Sheet C five that does speak to that, and essentially, is there written commitment on the site plan that they will adhere to the limits of the site plan as designed? And under this section of our zoning ordinance, they would have, they or another applicant would have to come back and seek a new special land use approval for any kind of expansion or addition, in addition to what's here.
Mr. Chair, and staff and consultant are in agreement that this is sufficient to have on the plan for this special, for this special land use in order to prevent the situation that I've proposed? You feel good about it?
So to be clear, it's just on the project, not on the property. Is that right?
Yes.
For the property that the project occupies.
It's a specific...
The limits.
Project on this, on this fifteen acre parcel.
The disturbed limits.
Yes.
Another way to kind of cement it into the record would be to include it in your motion of recommendation to the Board of Trustees and specify that it's limited to the project area as detailed in the exhibit dated September ninth. That date might be incorrect, but the sheet that's before you, that they recently provided...
I think that answered my question. The question of the stacking spaces for the order station, that's something we would probably discuss more at the preliminary site plan.
Site plan, I would think.
Yeah.
My question, I do have a question about the combining of the properties. Does that have to go first, combining of the parcels?
It would not have to go before necessarily the special land use is adopted by the Board of Trustees, but it would be something we typically seek prior to final site plan approval.
Okay, so we could go ahead with the special land use now, and then worry about the combination of the parcels at a later time.
And the main thing with that is they have to make sure they secure the project, and it can happen before they would make a commitment to the land to where they would want to combine.
Anybody else? Any questions, comments?
I think all of our concerns from before have been addressed, so I feel very comfortable with it.
Do we have any comments from the public concerning the special land use?
Mr. Chair, there's one participant on Zoom, so if the person on Zoom would like to make any comments, feel free to do so at this time. You can raise your hand virtually, or speak something, or type something into the chat. I'm not seeing any comments from them. Looks like there are no comments on that.
Okay, then I will entertain anything from the commission.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Jar.
I would move to recommend to the Township Board that they grant the applicant Silken Gold on behalf of the property owner Premier De Quinder Two LLC, the special land use approval to permit a gasoline filling station, convenience store, and drive-through restaurant, including a six thousand one hundred and thirty-nine square foot convenience store and drive-through restaurant building, and a four thousand seven hundred and eighty-six point seven square foot canopy with twelve fueling pumps at the site located as described in the agenda item. Based on the analysis and subject to the conditions and recommendations detailed in the letter of staff from September fourth, twenty twenty-four, and the McKenna letter dated August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, with the additional condition that the special approval being sought will be limited to the proposed uses and development area as shown on the site plan, consistent with Section twelve dot three oh eight of the Township Zoning Ordinance, that sheet being labeled EX three and presented this evening, for your consideration.
Motion before us, and by Commissioner Jar, support by Commissioner Creel. Any comments, discussions on the motion? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Cullen?
Yes.
Commissioner Jar? Commissioner Paul? Hatcherson?
Yes.
Commissioner Creel?
Yes.
Commissioner Grant?
Yes.
Director Bud?
Yes.
Motion carries. We have the special land use we'll recommend to the township. Item number two on the agenda this evening is, again, Case twenty-four dash zero zero five, Silken Gold Sheets, Premier De Quinder Two LLC Preliminary Site Plan Review. A request by applicant Silken Gold on behalf of property owner Premier De Quinder Two LLC to construct gasoline fueling station, convenience store, and drive-through restaurant, including a six thousand one hundred and thirty-nine square foot convenience store and drive-through restaurant building, and a four thousand seven hundred and eighty-six point seven square foot canopy with twelve fueling pumps. The site includes fifteen point nine five acres of property on parcels V one two five eight three zero four one nine nine zero 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 one zero zero one, and V one two five eight three zero four one nine nine zero 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 one seven one four, at the southwest corner of E Course and Hagerty Road. We first will have a presentation by Township staff.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I will defer directly to our planning consultant with McKenna Associates while I try to pull up some slides that can kind of follow along with the comments. So I'll try to get caught up on my graphics as we go along.
Thank you, Director Power. The applicant is requesting preliminary site plan approval, and in your packet is McKenna's fourth review letter. This starts on packet page twenty-three. There are a number of site plan standards that do comply with their preliminary plan, but there are some additional items for your consideration and discussion. Tonight is an opportunity to provide some direction to the applicant on those items. The first criteria, zoning and use, of course, the preliminary site plan is contingent on site plan approval by the Board of Trustees. These two items are tied together, but provided that that is approved, the zoning and the use is satisfied. There is a note under zoning and use on page two of our review. Again, that deals with the cross-access of the site, which the applicant has stated in their written response from Monday, that they will work with the Township staff to secure with the final site plan. The second item for your consideration are the dimensional requirements, and both the building configuration and the site layout do comply with the dimensional standards of the C one district, so those are all met. The third item, access and circulation. The proposed site access does comply with the township's access management standards. It also complies with the pedestrian circulation and truck circulation standards. Sidewalks are provided, bike racks are also detailed on the plans, and the truck turning radius templates show clear access across and through the site. Item number four, this is starting on the bottom of page three, packet page twenty-four, deals with parking and loading. In regards to parking spaces, the site is compliant in terms of the number, the dimensional standards, the number of barrier-free, and the loading zones. However, the applicant is requesting a deviation to those loading, or excuse me, to the stacking spaces for the drive-through restaurant. This is detailed in a table at the top of page four. You can see that they do have two additional stacking spaces at the pickup window that they have provided based on their model of service, but the ordinance does require ten stacking spaces at the order station, which they have provided three. And the applicant has provided some additional information and discussed that already to the planning commission, but it is within your purview to find that, it's within your purview, excuse me, to modify those standards, to reduce it to only three spaces, but you must find that the applicant has provided significant justification for that deviation, and that that lesser amount is sufficient. So that's one item tonight for your discussion. The fifth item for site plan criteria is landscaping, and this preliminary plan does comply with several of the zoning ordinance standards for landscaping, including the frontage landscaping, the parking lot screening, the loading area landscaping, but it is slightly deficient in terms of the interior parking lot landscaping, the green belt buffering, and the landscaping adjacent to the drive-through. However, based on the site configuration, we do feel that there is space within the site to accommodate the necessary landscaping, and that this is just a design issue and could be addressed. The applicant has also stated in their written response from September ninth that they will revise the preliminary plan to address these landscaping deficiencies and work with Township staff to correct them. In terms of lighting, this is on page six, packet page twenty-seven. This is the sixth site plan criteria. The original lighting plan that was provided exceeded the maximum illumination levels of the township. At this time, a revised photometric plan has not yet been provided that demonstrates compliance with these standards. However, again, the written response from the applicant dated September ninth states that they will be revising their photometric plan to comply with these standards, and will provide that with their final site plan. Item number seven deals with the architectural features. There's a couple minor items that we noted in our review letter for correction, including just labeling of the elevations by cardinal directions, and providing samples of the building materials, which they have brought this evening for the commission to review in person. Those are subject to your, for your review. The second paragraph on page six kind of details the location of some of those outdoor sales items. There is a concern raised that it might appear a bit cluttered, and this is, this is more of a design challenge, just based on the orientation and placement of the building on the lot. So the applicant has shown some images of a different site that showed how those masonry walls that flank the sides of the propane, and some of the other outdoor sales items could be somewhat screened. So it's still within your purview to determine if that's sufficient, or if you'd like to see some alternative design options to better screen those items. Item number eight, the trash enclosure. This is provided in the southwest corner of the site. It will match the building facade materials and does comply with ordinance standards. And then lastly, no signage is going to be approved as part of this application. It must be submitted under separate cover. And the recommendation stated on page seven is to grant a preliminary site plan approval with a number of conditions, provided that there is consensus this evening on direction to the applicant regarding the number of stacking spaces in the building design, as that will, that could impact the final site plan design that's presented. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lepick?
The request of Amirin Fishback reviewed the preliminary site plans for the Sheet's gas station and convenience store. Our general comments, their, the application should continue to work with Eagle on the wetland permitting and any significant correspondence, or when they get the wetland, the Eagle wetland permit to be forwarded to the township for record. There's also a lot of work in the Wayne County right-of-way, as well as the McLaughrey Drain, which is a Wayne County drain. So the county, if they haven't already, we recommend that they start working with the county permit office, and any county reviews and permits that they receive should also be forwarded to the township for review and record. In terms of water main, there's a water main crossing under Hagerty Road, which, again, is Wayne County right-of-way, so any, all the water main work under Hagerty Road there will also need to be reviewed and permitted by Wayne County. The applicant will be responsible for finalizing and designing connection methods of existing water main prior to, we could, prior to the final engineering review process. The sanitary sewer service is also proposed across, under the McLaughrey Drain, and is also within the E Course Road right-of-way. This work will also need to be reviewed and approved by Wayne County Permit Office, as well as the Wayne County Drain Commissioner's Office. All correspondence and the reviews from the county must be provided to township for review. There is a county standard, which we listed in our letter, that per the Wayne County rules, specifications, and procedures for construction permits, all new or replacement utilities shall be installed to provide a minimum depth of cover of not less than six feet below the existing bottom of the drain, or three feet below the original bottom elevation of the drain when crossing a county drain. So this is specifically referring to the sanitary service that's crossing the McLaughrey Drain. We do not believe those requirements are met. So again, the applicant should work with the county to meet those requirements and revise their design and get a permitted, permitted and approved design by the county. For stormwater management, we noted that there was some notes calling out plastic pipe, plastic storm sewer pipe, which is not allowed in commercial developments in the township. All storm sewer design should conform to the standards set forth in the Township Engineering Standards Manual. And in the township, all commercial storm sewer should be reinforced concrete pipe. The applicant also proposes a new concrete precast box culvert for their driveway off the E Course, which, for the crossing at the McLaughrey Drain. So again, as stated previously in our letter, all that work needs to be submitted and reviewed and approved by the county permit office and the Drain Commissioner's Office. So all of, all of that county work should be submitted to the township for review and record. Prior to any start of construction or final engineering review approval, the permits must be obtained and submitted to the township for review and record. The traffic impact study, the revised traffic impact study dated July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, was submitted with the revised traffic counts that were, that had the provided traffic counts from neighboring developments. That, our comment on that is, again, needs to be submitted to the county, as that's county right-of-way. Any decisions as modifications to existing roadways or signals in the area will be, will come from Wayne County. So in summary, Fishback recommends the planning commission grant the Sheet's gas station and convenience store site plan, preliminary site plans dated August second, twenty twenty-four, preliminary site plan approval based on engineering feasibility of the site plans and subject to the comments listed above. As recommended, that the applicant begin discussions with the county regarding all of the water main, sanitary service, and stormwater management work, if they haven't done so already. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Director Power? Comment from the fire department?
Mr. Chair, the fire marshal and deputy fire chief, Andrew Lenahan, reviewed these plans. He provided a letter dated August He provided a letter dated August 14th of 2024. I will note some broad sections of his review. The first pertains to water supply and the comment that remains regarding water supply based on the flow that's provided is that a second fire hydrant will be required to achieve the flow rate that's required. And the latest submittal from August 2nd only showed one fire hydrant on the site. And I highlight the location. It's up there at the northeast corner of the site. So that's a, that's something that can be addressed during engineering review and final site plan review, and we expect it to be addressed at that time. The fire marshal noted that the emergency vehicle access plan on sheet C6 has been added to the latest submittal and is compliant, speaking to now fire department access items. Additionally, there needs to be an unobstructed vertical clearance of 13 foot six on the access roads, and the angle of approach and departure for any means of fire department access shall not exceed one foot drop in 20 feet, subject to review and approval by the agency authority holding jurisdiction, and that is found to be compliant per the latest submittal as well. There are a couple of items pertaining to a Knox box for access and a parking, no parking fire lane sign. Both of these things are expected to be addressed during permitting at a later step. So there are no further comments or concerns from the fire marshal.
Okay, thank you. And now for presentation by the applicant. Do we have any comments from the applicant?
At this point, I think we have reviewed the site plan in a pretty significant detail, but if you have any specific questions, I'm very happy to answer those, you know, anything you may have about the site.
Okay, thank you. Planning commissioners.
I think you may, should probably explain your colors.
Can you repeat that one more time?
Colors.
Oh, our colors.
Exterior colors.
So the exterior, would you like me to approach and bring those up to you?
I would imagine this is your brand, right? So it doesn't deviate from one location to the next.
And these are the materials that will be called out on the final site plan listed. Okay.
While Alex finished walking those around, thank you, Alex. So this represents full section brick and stone. It is veneer, so we are wood frame construction, but it will be a full section, full brick and cast stone with these architectural metal panels and pieces that you see here. Those are the actual colors as called out on our drawings. It's a very nice premium looking building. In addition to that, you may have seen some of our pictures and some of our sites, we have brick paver surrounding the entire building. It really lends itself to a premium look.
Just a comment, I have gone by the one in Romulus, very nice looking building. I went before it was open. I did happen to go by after it was open, but not particularly going there, but ended up there. Good to see for you in Romulus, a lot of cars in the gas pumps, a lot of cars there. Mentioned that you were on the agenda tonight. The woman I was talking to said when she goes to her sister, she always has to stop there and eat. So we're pleased. We hope that this will be a good addition to that corner, and it's a very nice looking building.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question about the stacking spaces now.
Okay.
So our, our requirements appear to be for five stacking spaces at the pickup window, 10 at the order station. That's a total of 15 stacking station, stacking locations. And you are proposing seven at the pickup window, just two more than five, did that math right? And only three at the order station. Our McKenna consultant seems to feel that four, that moving the, moving the order station up by one and changing those numbers, I assume changing them to six and four, four at the order, order station is what McKenna's consultancy has recommended. I am wondering if our consultant could expand on why that is? I mean, I see it's a, it's a recommendation, but I don't understand what difference moving the order station north by one to allow an additional stacking space. I don't understand the significance of it.
I, I don't believe that it would be significant. I think the recommendation was just if there was any way to kind of reconfigure the existing site elements, meaning the menu board, if that could be, or the order station, if that could be shifted slightly to accommodate one more, then that would be, you know, just kind of like a safety parameter. However, earlier this evening, the applicant did speak to why relocating that order station and having it on the curve is not advantageous to their model since it is a touchscreen. So we wouldn't recommend moving that and making it more difficult for the consumer.
If I, if I may even add a little more context to our drive-through, so since we're not a traditional squawk box, you know, you drive up somewhere, say you're going to a McDonald's or something like that, you sit there and you wait for someone to get on the speaker and, or take your order. We're different, so we have that touchscreen. It's not dependent upon someone inside of the building to come and take your order. So it really does lend itself to kind of like an expeditious way to move through the line. So that actually makes the stacking after the order point even a little bit more critical because we have that expeditious way to take an order. As soon as somebody pulls up, we're not waiting on any employees to take that. In addition, you can actually mobile order on our app. You don't even have to go to the order point. You just keep pulling through. So we have multiple ways to get customers through this line quickly, and when they order on the app, it's literally ready, they hand the bag out the window, they don't even have to pay. It's fantastic. So it really is expeditious. And again, I really think that nine an hour, I would encourage you to drive down to Romulus before our final site plan approval and just go watch. It is, it is very low volume. Most people come and they either grab some gas, go inside, order, they sit down, they grab a sandwich. That, that's really the bulk of our customers.
Mr. Chair, I've had the experience of watching some people try to use a computer order screen, and I know it can be daunting for some people, and that's why I'm concerned about the stacking behind the fully computerized, technical support not available touchscreen. I have a question about the site configuration then for the applicant. If there is a backup at that order station, would cars back up onto one of our major thorough fares or would they back up into your pump area?
They, they would back up into the pump area. We're in a situation where this is going to be, you know, if we stack cars all the way out to the public road, it would be something like 20 cars stacked up, which would be pretty incredible. We've never had anything like that happen. So especially not for the drive-through. So really, we have a substantial amount of internal queuing to the site before a car could even hit the public road, which is another advantage of the site plan layout.
Mr. Chair, I'll just make a comment now that I, I think I understand the applicant's request, and I, I think I am okay with foregoing the condition in the, in the McKenna letter requiring the shift of the order station one space north. I'd be okay with approving it as depicted. I don't know how the rest of the commission feels, but that's all, that's, that's where I'm at.
I would agree at nine, if, if their peak is nine cars per hour, which seems really low, that's never going to happen, ever.
Truly an amenity. It is.
Anybody else's comments?
Just recommend, I'm assuming, based on how thorough our planning commission is, you're probably already doing this, but just I would recommend making into the motion, if you adopt all the recommendations of the planner's report, just make sure you modify that one to allow that stacking space.
And I, and I probably would say just you can make a note that the parcel would be
Any other comments?
Through the chair, question for the applicant. Do you have, in any of the comments that were made in, in staff's letter and the engineering review preliminary, do you have any doubt that you'll meet any of their comments that they've noted? With exception of the queuing.
Stonefield Engineering is, is doing this project for us. They've put in quite a significant amount of time and effort into making sure we've cross-teased, dotted eyes. We're very confident that we can meet those staff comments. They're just, hey, something we're going to work through on final engineering. We've done quite a bit of due diligence here, we're very confident we can work with staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have a concern. We get a severe rain, that corner floods severely. How are you in the process of preparing to take care of that flooding? Because that could come up, I don't know how far up the road it goes with respect to your entry, to your cut, but how is that being affected or being taken care of at this point?
Yeah, so Stonefield Engineering looked at this site initially and said, hey, we know there's flooding out here, we're going to figure out how to address that. And so when we did our survey, that was one of the first things we started looking at. And we took a pretty long process to work through Eagle and establish a high watermark essentially for that drain. So we've worked through that Eagle process, and that is, you know, indicative of our wetland and our floodplain mitigation that's shown on this property. It's pretty substantial, and that's because we know there is flooding out there, and we need to provide that additional capacity for the drain to back up that would mitigate our site improvements. Our site will raise here. I mean, that's, that's really what's going on, is we are going to raise the site, and then in compensation for that, we will take, you know, area out and dig it out so that the drain has additional room to back up. So we've done a lot of pre-planning just to make sure that we can do this, we can make the site work. We've spent a pretty significant amount of time and resources to really cross-tease and dot-eyes on that. We were very worried about it. We're going to continue to work through the process with the county on the drain crossing. We've got to do some additional stuff, we've got to do a full head grass study. Stonefield Engineering is obviously going to handle that, that for us, and we're going to appropriately size and design that crossing.
Okay, thank you. And one other comment I want to make is that I think it's useful with you, you're the first one that's come in and looked at in a sit-down restaurant, and in that location, the nearest one would be over on Belleville and Tyler Road before we find another sit-down restaurant. And I think having Sheetz there would be a benefit, especially to the businesses that are north of E-course Road as well.
Through the chair? Commissioner Grant? I just want to follow up on one of the comments made by, in the McKenna report regarding the Hagerty elevation, the propane tanks, the future, what, ice machine? Is there a future ice?
It's shown in the plan. So, so the ice machines are actually shown on the south elevation facing away from E-course. They, so they won't face the road. I, I think what you're talking about is the future recycling machine. There is potential that we want to put in some of those bottle return machines in the future on the sidewalk plan. Right now, we're not seeing any movement on that. There's issues with putting the machines outside, some operational things we'd have to handle. We are still learning Michigan. We're learning how to take these bottles back, so we're a little new to the game. We, we are. It's something, you know, we're learning that a lot of people don't return them at, at C-stores. So it's something that we're trying to pre-plan for if we ever need and have, you know, a ton of bottles coming back. Our operations team may need that on, on that sidewalk plan.
So I just wanted, if you go back to the elevation, I think you labeled as right elevation. That one. So, so you, what was the reason for putting the propane tanks there versus on the south side? And the reason why I look at that and then I see potentially you might have that other machine there as well, and then you got the ladder to the roof, the door. You know, I'm just wondering, is there a reason why you couldn't put it on the south side?
Yes, there is. So the propane lockers have to be a certain distance away from an electrical source. So that's one of the areas we can get it away. The other thing is if we put those propane lockers in front of our windows on the south side, it, it doesn't look right. So that's just naturally, we got to meet some of those building fire codes, and this is the, the place where it fits appropriately.
Anybody else's comments, questions? Okay, do we have any public comment? Anybody from the public that would like to come up and speak? Anybody on Zoom?
Looks like our remote participant on Zoom still does not have their hand raised, and there are no comments in the chat.
Okay, then at this time, I would entertain an action by the commission.
Chair, I know there are a few conditions on that, on that motion. I'd be happy to make a motion if no other commissioner wanted to jump in there and take the honor.
I'm sure there'll be some.
Mr. Chair, in the effort of moving the meeting along, I, I would move to grant the applicant, Skilken Gold, on behalf of property owner Premier DeQuinder II LLC, the preliminary site plan approval to construct the aforementioned gasoline fueling station, convenience store, and drive-through restaurant, including the 60100 square foot convenience store and drive-through restaurant building, and the 4,786.7 square foot canopy with the 12 fueling pumps at the site located, again, as described in the agenda item. Based on the analysis and subject to the conditions detailed in the following letters, a letter from staff dated September 4th, 2024, the McKenna letter dated August 31st, 2024, the Fishback letter dated August 2nd, 22nd, 2024, the fire department letter, August 14th, 2024, noting the feedback and concerns from the planning commission that the planning commission finds that modification of the parking landscaping and green belt requirements called out in the McKenna letter would be acceptable, subject to the conditions outlined in the McKenna letter, and subject to final site plan review, noting that the shift requested in that letter of the order station is not required, and on the condition that the parcels shall be combined.
Do we have a motion? By Commissioner Jar, supported by Commissioner Grant. Do we have any discussion on the motion?
I think you got it.
Finally.
Didn't, I didn't miss any conditions.
Then could we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Cullen?
Yes.
Commissioner Jar?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Commissioner Atchison?
Yes.
Commissioner Creo?
Yes.
Yes.
And the motion carries. You have your preliminary site plan. Thank you. Okay, we're into new business. Item number one. It is case 22-010, Zippy Belleville Real Estate LLC, Zippy Auto Wash, Final Site Plan Amendment. A request by Zippy Belleville Real Estate LLC for consideration on relocation of a monument sign affiliated with the final site plan to construct a 4,900 square foot automatic car wash and related site improvements on a 1.65 acre site, which was approved by the planning commission on December 13th, 2023. The project is proposed to be located at 11600 Belleville Road, parcel ID number 83081990004711, which is Zone C2, extensive highway business district. The property is located on the west side of Belleville Road between Venetian Ave and Sunrise Lane. We have a presentation by the township staff, please.
Mr. Chair, I appreciate you taking this matter up this evening. This is a, but a small part of the project that was approved, as mentioned, on December 13th, 2023, for the Zippy Auto Wash site at 11600 Belleville Road. We also have Corey Weaver, who would be the owner of the site, in, in the audience tonight, so I appreciate you attending, Mr. Weaver. This is an item that is being processed as a relatively minor item, but it is still a amendment to the approved site plan because generally, sign permitting, as was mentioned with the Sheetz project, is something that's handled by staff administratively. However, the location and placement and design of the signs, at least at a preliminary level, are part of what is the record of approval of the final site plan when it goes through the planning commission. And for that reason, any changes to the location or design of a sign that is proposed during kind of the construction and permitting phase, it really should come back to the planning commission as part of an amendment to the site plan. really should come back to the Planning Commission as part of an amendment to the site plan. So as, as is the case here, Mr. Weaver provided an explanation of the, the reason for this change. The previous sign location, and I realize the way this lays out, there's some distracting imagery on the left side of the screen, but I'd like you to focus just on the right side of the screen. The original location of the sign was in the southeast corner of the site where you see some landscaping by where the site kind of cuts that corner on the southeast edge. And upon further reflection on what would be best for visibility of the site, Zippy Auto Wash has decided that they'd like to pursue an option that's farther north, closer to the access driveway. So in terms of location, that is the request. There have been a couple of different layout options considered. There was an initial request that would have had the sign set back and offset a little bit from the shared multi-tenant monument sign that exists on the site. But based on some concerns with visibility that I and the applicant discussed, the applicant wanted to move forward with an alternative request to put that sign closer to the existing multi-tenant sign. One caveat to mention is just that there are typically not allowances for off-site signage. This parcel configuration is very unique in that it's a kind of a business park type of arrangement where there's this parcel was split from other parcels that only have access on the private drive on the north end of the site. And so when the Van Buren Plaza Medical Center was constructed, it had a multi-tenant sign up in this portion of the site that was always intended to be split off. So the way that the Planning Commission handled that was that there is a sign easement that is being placed to allow that sign to remain in place while Zippy does have the rights to pursue another monument sign on the site. But because this is a change to the location and there are some design changes involved as well, I wanted to just bring this request before the Planning Commission. And I, in, in respect to the applicant's kind of time and effort as well, this may be just a good opportunity to ask questions about the proposal and consider whether the Planning Commission would be amenable to this or something like this. And in terms of the, the relocation of the sign, as well as some of the design changes, they do have the ability to pursue the six-foot tall monument sign with a two-foot tall base. I believe the sign that was originally presented was not a electronic changeable message, but that's what's being proposed here. So there are some minor design changes. That, that electronic message center would have to change no more than once every hour. So there are some limits on that that staff would have to review with the sign permit. But this is really kind of an, it was crafted in your agenda tonight as an open-ended request to have the Planning Commission consider whether they would be willing to allow staff to review a permit application for a sign and a location of the site with a different design as long as it meets, a different location of the site and a different design as long as it meets the standards of the township zoning ordinance. So I invite you to ask Mika any questions. And again, Mr. Weaver is here tonight as well.
Okay, thank you. Does the applicant have anything?
Hi, good evening, Commissioners. Corey Weaver, the owner of Zippy Auto Wash. Good to be back at the podium. Yeah, thanks, Mr. Power, for the overview. That was, in a nutshell, the original sign was down here in the southeast corner. And through the site planning process, we added substantially greater number of trees and shrubs for screening of the queue area as well as a decorative wall along the front, which matches the decorative wall that exists today, using the same masonry colors and composition. So in, in the end, the sign location that was originally proposed essentially is completely obscured by the additional landscaping and the retaining wall or knee wall that's shown here. So we were simply trying to find an alternate location where the sign would still be visible. And with it here, parallel, essentially aligned with the Meridian Plaza sign, that seemed to be a reasonably good choice for both visibility as well as non-conflicting sightlines that Dan and I had discussed. So happy to entertain. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners? Comments?
My comment is that we have a wonderful staff that has been able to do a lot of great stuff for us. So I would have no, no issues with letting them handle this.
Mr. Chair, I, I remember working on this site plan and remember the issues around the Meridian Plaza sign being where it is and it being a problem with the lot split. Because the Meridian Plaza people then wouldn't be allowed to have a sign on Belleville Road. And I seem to remember there being an easement. I don't remember exactly the details or what the exact terms of that easement were. But I know that in our township, you're not supposed to have two monument signs on one parcel. Now, I don't know if that easement covers it. I don't know if staff has, has looked through that to figure out what the ramifications are. I'm reasonably certain, though, that if you do have more than one monument sign on a parcel and they're very close together, the total sign area counts for your allowable, your allowable amount. You know what I mean? So I, I kind of remember there being a clause in the ordinance that says if you have two signs right next to each other, the total area of the sign encompasses both signs and the space in between. And that may mean that the sign being proposed isn't therefore compliant with, with the ordinance. I can't grant something that isn't compliant with the ordinance. I need to know that it is. Staff, staff is under that requirement too. The location of the sign, moving it from the, the southeast corner up to location A where the Meridian Plaza sign is, makes complete sense. You know, we, I don't think we ever really liked the location of the sign when we were first doing the site plan review because we felt that it might lead to people trying to get into the car wash by going through where the Maria's delivery doors, the back alley of Maria's Plaza there. I don't know if that's the name of the plaza, but, so it really does make sense to move the sign further up. And as long as it's in a, as long as it's still compliant, I'm okay with, I'm okay with it. Except that the sign shown doesn't look like a B-Rod sign to me. That's got blue plastic brick. And I think that in the Belleville Road overlay district, the plinth, what do they call it, the, the base? I think that has to be of a red brick material. It has to be compliant with the rest of the Belleville Road overlay district. Additionally, I've seen Zippy car wash signs. I know that they are highly animated, very bright. And we have ordinances in the township that require that content to not change more frequently than once an hour. There are brightness standards that you'll have to meet. I would assume that staff would, we'd, we'd need a note put in for staff to make sure that that is, the final sign is actually compliant, if, if it could be allowed there. Those are my concerns, as long as you understand that it can't be animated.
Correct, yeah. We're, yeah, we have EMCs in all the townships and comply with all the local ordinances.
With all the local ordinances, okay. Well, the, the one on Ellsworth is very blinky. But yeah, the location makes a lot of sense to me, moving it up to, to A, assuming that our ordinances allow those two signs to be there.
Side by side.
Side by side. That's the issue. It's the, it's existing. It's side by side. I understand there's an easement. But when their two signs are placed side by side like that, I think there's an additional clause that needs to be explored, perhaps by staff for, for compliance. I know that, oh, I'll take a breath. But I also know that, that location B on the other side of the, the entrance, was that, is that still being proposed? The, the alternate location B, I think I saw in the packet, on the other side of the entrance drive, Director Power, or is that off the table?
That was the original, I guess, the original alternative was this option B. And I believe, Mr. Weaver, you've walked away from the option that would have that be on the south side of the driveway, correct?
Yeah, this seems simpler and consistent with two signs side by side, so to speak, from a sightline standpoint.
My personal opinion is, is A is, A is where the sign should have been originally, whether it's a compliant monument sign. You just need to work out the details. That proposed location B is better than where it is on the approved site plan. And yeah, the sign needs to be, be checked out for its compliance with our B-Rod standards. I don't think that one is. But if, if that's all we're talking about is a staff approval of B-Rod standards and a location change, then I'm, I'm okay with it, knowing that the sign has animation constraints on it.
So to be clear, what you're suggesting is, is that locate, suggesting the location is okay as long as it meets signage ordinances, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And it may not, or at this point in time, so we may, we're not really approving the sign, we're just approving the location.
I mean, I can't even really approve the location, I suppose, without knowing what the sign's supposed to look like. Yeah, so I mean, it's, there's some, it feels like there's a couple of little details that need to be addressed.
I mean, Commissioner, are we, we can approve the relocation, right? As long as it applies or meets the sign ordinance of the township and that staff, we can direct staff to make sure that it does, right? I mean, I like the, I like the idea of more landscaping and, and more trees down to cover the, the queuing area. I mean, I think that's better than a sign. And I like your idea of, you know, the, the old sign location could be confusing to go into that plaza behind it, right, south of it. So I think the location is, on the site plan, is what they're asking, I think is what it's asking for, as long as it complies, right? I think that needs to be part of our approval.
And my memory of it isn't a hundred percent. I don't have the meeting minutes in front of me. But I, I seem to remember having discussions about why is the sign down on the southeast corner? And I think the answer was, well, because that Meridian sign is already up there and the applicant didn't want to be, you know, didn't want to go on to the, the Meridian sign, didn't want to be a spot on the Meridian sign, but wanted their own monument sign. The applicant could probably verify that. And that's why the sign ended up on the final plan where it was. That, and there were concerns about two, two monument signs right next to each other. And there, there were additional concerns, was my recollection of it. And, but as long as staff, you know, staff can make sure to address those concerns and make sure that it's a compliant sign, location A seems okay with me.
But compliance might be, could be half the sign, size of what they show there.
That's my concern.
That we could be approving something where they may have to relocate it again.
Then they come back.
Unlike the size.
Then they come back, right?
They come back.
Yeah.
I, I believe you could put together a motion that would enable just a revised location to be on the final site plan. And if it would be helpful to the Planning Commission, we could have kind of an updated final site plan that, that ends up getting filed with the updated sign design submitted for, for your record or for just an update at a later date. But those concerns are received. I'll definitely look at the separation between the existing and proposed signs. I don't know what that distance is. And, Mr. Weaver, was the new sign going to be, do you recall? Was it going to be just outside of that easement boundary?
Just outside of the easement boundary, which would put it at something greater than five to six feet between the signs, sufficient for maintenance and landscaping in between.
And the sign will not be animated, correct?
It's not. Actually, none of our signs are animated. They do flip based on local ordinance, you know? So the message is changed throughout the day. For example, in Siouxsie Township, it's every hour. Pittsfield Township, it's every thirty seconds. In Celine, it's every fifteen seconds. But not flashing or animated.
Okay, because especially where that sign is located, it's at a very busy area of the, and I, I'm afraid because a lot of people live in that subdivision across the street, I'm concerned about people turning in there and people watching the sign and not paying attention to the road can cause a problem. That's why I'm worried about the animation or the frequency of change, I should say.
Yeah, we don't do any animation. It's strictly text messages, like a changeable copy sign, basically, but with LEDs.
Okay.
Not American flags.
Not American flags.
Right.
The American flag ain't gonna wait.
That's the concern. That's a visual distraction on a fairly busy road approaching a small town.
Yeah, where we're narrowing to, down to one lane. Okay.
Mr. Chair, could I ask the applicant one question? Do you know offhand if that base is proposed to be the same material as the material on the building?
That was the intent, to show the same gray, basically gray block or quick brick that's used for the building, so it matches the building. But if necessary, I mean, we could adapt that. I think the BR, BROD allowed the gray brick for the Zippy building. But if we need to change the sign because it's that roadside, that's fine too.
Anybody else? Commissioners? Comments? Anyone from the public?
Our Zoom participant is still not raising their hand or speaking into the chat.
Okay, well, at this time it could entertain some action by the commission.
Chair?
Commissioner Grant?
I'd like to make a motion to grant Zippy, Zippy Wash final, a final site plan amendment to relocate their, their monument sign to north of its current location. And it's affiliated and associated with the final site plan to construct a forty-nine hundred square foot automatic car wash and related site improvements on a one point six five acre site, which was previously, previously approved by the commission on December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. The location is at eleven six hundred Belleville Road, parcel ID number eight three zero eight one nine nine zero 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 four seven one one. And I want to note that it's not an animated sign. And I also would like to add that, that the applicant should work with the township staff to meet the sign ordinance standards.
Including the Belleville Road overlay? Would you entertain that?
Sure.
I would, if I could suggest one addition to that motion as well, because I had a condition regarding this location in particular. It does appear to be a little bit close to the hydrant that's in that part of the site. So I would just add that staff will check with the Van Buren Township Fire Marshal to make sure there's not a, a conflict. Or you could just refer to that condition in my report.
Can we add that?
You can do that.
We add, add that, that you also coordinate with the Fire Marshal relative to the location of the current hydrant or the planned hydrant.
Yeah, sorry. Sorry. Support, absolutely.
We have a motion by Commissioner Grant, supported by Commissioner Atchison. Do we have any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, staff, staff, if there is a problem with staff just granting it or with materials choices that aren't, may or, may or not be compliant with the B-Rod, staff will bring this back before the Planning Commission. That's the intent.
That would be the intent.
Then I'm satisfied with the motion as it stands.
Okay, anybody else? We'll entertain roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Cullen?
Yes.
Commissioner Jar?
Yes.
Commissioner Paul?
Yes.
Commissioner Atchison?
Yes.
Creo?
Yes.
Commissioner Grant?
Yes.
Presser Bud?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Relocate your sign.
Thanks.
Okay, next item on the topic up for discussion is discussion topic case twenty-two zero one five, Pulte Homes of Michigan, Cedar Chase, Walden Woods, PUD Amendment. Discussion item. The Planning Commission and staff will discuss a legal opinion regarding the path of review and approval for a plan by applicant Pulte Homes of Michigan LLC on behalf of Cedar Chase to amend an existing planned unit development PUD agreement originally approved for Walden Woods Apartments by removing thirty-one point eight five acres of property from the PUD at the northwest corner of Morton Taylor and Tyler Roads within the existing Walden Woods PUD. The site is located at parcel ID number V one two five eight three zero four zero nine nine zero 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 two seven zero four and V one two five eight three zero four zero nine nine zero 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 two seven zero five on the north side of Tyler Road between Morton Taylor Road and Walden Boulevard. The subject site includes thirty-one point eight one gross acres of property, two twenty-eight point three five net. 228.35 net site acreage. Presentation first by the staff. Director Power?
Chair, I'm here to assist as needed. I have some notes in my, um, cover memo that explain this request. Just very briefly, I'll kind of tie that, um, description back to the public hearing we had in June of this year. There were some conditions around the proposed amendment at that time as it was being processed as a amendment to remove and, and separate the proposed Cedar Chase project from the Walden Woods PUD. As part of that meeting and as part of that request, we were asked to get a legal opinion on what the, what the process is and what the viability is of the existing PUD. And we now have that opinion, um, as well as, uh, some statements on the, um, status of that PUD. So I know Director Akers is here to help walk through that and I will turn my comments over to him at this point. Thank you.
Sure. Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
So the purpose of the discussion is primarily informational. We wanted to make sure we gave the planning commission an update regarding the discussions that have been had with Pulte and our legal counsel with regards to their existing planned unit development agreement and, and how we've discussed moving forward. So just to kind of go through the background, um, originally when the project was submitted, the township discussed with our legal counsel exactly how we were going to handle it. Because there's an existing planned unit development agreement for the site. We, at one point, removed the planned unit development standards out of our zoning ordinance. But however, we did add in planned residential development standards into our, into our zoning code. So trying to figure out how to navigate this was, was something that early was a challenge. Initially, when we were having those conversations with our township attorney, we were under the impression that the developer who had the original development agreement, um, it's Hayden Gregory and Associates, um, was not intending to be a party to the development or any development agreements moving forward. So based on that, our township attorneys had recommended that the township enter into a new agreement with, with Pulte. So after the planning commission meeting where the Cedar Chase application was tabled, township staff and legal counsel began to work towards getting answers to several of the questions that were asked by the planning commission. Um, at that time, we started having conversations with Pulte and we were made aware that, that, uh, it was the applicant's preference to amend the existing PUD agreement as opposed to going forward with a new PRD agreement. And that the original developer Hayden Gregory and Associates was willing to be a party to the amended agreement. So based on this, we had a meeting with everybody involved. And they made this request and ended up working on a draft amended PUD agreement. Um, and, and the reasons why that they did this primarily is because it was a simpler, cleaner procedure than just then, um, having to adopt a new PR agree, new PRD agreement, excuse me, on top of the existing PUD agreement. So in the packet, uh, there is an initial draft of the amendment. The final agreement is still being discussed and worked on between township staff, this is, and our legal counsel and their legal counsel. This is just an initial draft. So we haven't received a finalized pro, proposal, but we wanted to make sure that the planning commission was aware of what was going on. I did want to take some of the time to address some of the questions that the planning commission brought up in their motion. I know, um, there was a, a letter from our township attorney which outlined, um, some of what the, the processes and procedures are broadly. But I wanted to answer some of the questions that were initially from the motion based on the discussions that we've had. So if I miss any, please let me know, but, uh, looking back through the motion, you know, the first question that was asked was this with regards to the validity of the existing PUD agreement. If we adopt a new PRD agreement, um, the proposal that's being requested moving forward is to work within the existing PUD agreement. Um, so that proposal is going to be amended. After speaking with our township attorney, uh, the township doesn't have a section or zoning code which addresses PUDs specifically. Um, and due to this, we're going to be following the amendment procedures which are in the existing development agreement, uh, which is essentially to have the township board authorize the amendment to the PUD. We've made sure, and this is something that we've discussed with the applicant, is that the language in the agreement will require the applicant to go through the proper site plan approval processes through the planning commission for, for, uh, for condominium developments. The next question that was in the motion was with regards to the performance status of the, the modified PUD. After review of the existing PUD, the only remaining obligation from the prior developer that's really still there that hasn't been completed, um, was the paving of Morton Taylor Road. And so in that discussion with our township attorney, we're making sure that there is language in the amended PUD to not only discuss, make sure that Morton Taylor Road gets paved, um, but also to outline some of the performance of when it's going to get paved, if there's going to be construction securities, those type of things, and those will be added, uh, proposed in an updated agreement. Another question that came up in the, uh, in the motion was whether or not there are any bonds related to the project that are currently available. And the short answer is no, we haven't been able to find any bonds that we have, uh, to support the paving of Morton Taylor Road from when the project was originally submitted in the mid 90s. The requirement, there was a stipulation to ask legal counsel to review the requirement for paving, which it has, and it'll be included in the amended PUD agreement. And then, um, the last question that was brought up, which was PUD agreement specific, is there is a question as far as what the underlying zoning of the property is and how those items tie together. So the underlying zoning of the property is R1B. It's a single-family residential district. However, the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act has allowed those PUDs as a tool and they're intended to give flexibility. So that way you can make modifications to zoning regulations to encourage, uh, cluster developments and to encourage efficient use of property and, uh, preservation of natural resources. So based on that, the way the PUDs are set up is the PUDs and the stipulations of the PUDs are controlling if they're specifically called out. So the change in this instance, the original PR, PUD had a specific exhibit B that was tied to it. And that exhibit B called out these two properties for a multifamily development. They were doing attached townhomes. And then it called out that property that's, that's right, the portion of it that's right at the corner for a commercial use. And they were able to do that under the, the state zoning laws at the time. So what this amendment will do is it will effectively change those two parcels from the multifamily use and configuration and from the commercial use and configuration to the single-family residential use that Cedar Chase is proposing, if it gets approved. So based on what the attorney submitted, we're still working on it. It's still very much a work in progress. We haven't seen any proposed exhibit Bs from the developer yet. And how we handle those is still something that's very much in discussion between us and the attorney and, and how that's going to go on. But the intent of the process is, is that this should be simpler. There should be fewer questions. The planning commission is going to see the site plan. Um, they're going to be able to work through the process, uh, very much so how we already have been. And it should eliminate some of the confusion by following this procedure. But, um, I'm happy to answer any questions and I'm happy to refer any questions that I cannot answer to our legal counsel. So thank you.
Commissioners? I, I have a question. When this goes into development, are they following under the PUD? That was an existing at the time because we don't have a PUD now? Or does it fall under what we kind of have, or what we have today as a PRD? Or are we going to be open to establish whatever parameters we want on it?
So the, the short answer is, is that, you know, there's not really going to be a short answer. So, so we don't have any specific guidelines in our zoning code for how to handle PUDs. The only provisions that we have for how to make amendments to this document are within the existing development agreement itself. So the way the state statute is set up with regards to PUDs, you're able to have flexibility to do different things if they're specifically called out in the PUD agreement. So I believe, and we're in the process of verifying this with the attorneys, that I believe that we do have the ability to utilize it to be flexible in certain situations that the township feels appropriate. But it's, it, it, we would have to have those conversations. But it, but the way that we've discussed it and the way we've discussed some of the adoption procedures is that it would not be considered a PRD. It would not follow the standards in our PRD section of our zoning code.
Okay.
Because it's existing.
Okay.
Ruth Chair, if I could, um, just to highlight some parts of that as well. The underlying zoning of this site is R1B, um, but there's a PUD that's been placed over the entire site. And my, my best way of understanding and describing it is that the PUD itself is a mechanism, still a mechanism in which there can be some flexibility for conventional zoning standards in exchange for site enhancements. And, um, I think the good thing about the process to date, um, or the productive thing to date is that using the, the current PRD, PRD standards as a, as a kind of modern analog for what we would have used to do under the PUD, there are some design treatments. I'm, I'm pretty sure the, um, applicant is still proposing to follow through with in terms of having some common open space, um, having offsets between the homes, um, some, some other creative design features that wouldn't be there with a, a conventional plat necessarily. But, uh, it is, it is a little bit complicated because we just don't have those specific terms in a current PUD ordinance to use to, to make those kind of exchanges. But the PRD standards were pretty, pretty thoroughly pursued in the initial design and, and, um, I think in terms of the layout at least, it's supposed to be, we anticipate it being similar. Of course, that's still under review.
So there are other standards in our zoning code when they talk about residential developments that are developed outside of a PRD. So, so there are architectural standards, um, that we have in the development standard section of our zoning code. So when you talk about facade materials like brick, um, or masonry, there's still requirements that they have to meet that 50% requirement. There's still requirements that they have to meet that architecturally different standard. Cause those, while they are in our PRD section of our zoning code, they're also outside of it and, and, um, some of our site development standards for non-PRDs as well.
Anybody else? Questions, comments?
So I, if I may, I feel that the, the five questions that we, uh, put to staff, I think we have answers to all five. Primarily, they, they, they are answered by, yeah, we're not going to take that parcel out of the PUD. It's going to stay one large PUD. And that answers at least two of the questions. And I will leave the responsibility for, uh, bonds and who's responsible if the developer walks away. Because it does happen. I'm sure that can be handled by, by legal. That's not something that I need to worry about on the planning commission. But what I do need to worry about on the planning commission, I mean, we, we read site plans and we compare them for, you know, the setbacks shall be maintained and the building standards shall be maintained and the, the amount of brick needs to be ensured. We rely on knowing which set of ordinances to apply. And yeah, I get that this is, this is the PUD, but if there's language in the agreement that says the PUD agreement shall cover, you know, shall be the controlling, shall be the controlling document. And the controlling document says, uh, we defer to the PUD, uh, rules in the ordinance. And then there are no PUD rules in the ordinance because they've been superseded or dropped. That leaves us again wondering, well, which standard are we supposed to apply? Would it then be the R1B underlying zoning or would we treat it as a PRD? In case we, you know, in case something falls through. I don't expect that we'll find those until we actually start doing the project. But when it does happen, it sure would be nice to have it called out in the agreement that instead of, you know, waving the hands and saying, yeah, it falls back on the PUD, just, just let us know. Does it fall back to being a PRD? Can we treat it like a PRD in the cases where we're not sure what's supposed to happen? Or shall we treat it as the underlying zoning, R1B? If the PUD document doesn't say, because the PUD agreement does say in places that, you know, you go, go consult the ordinances on PUDs. We don't have those anymore and that's the problem. So my, my request in, in your conversations with legal is please make it clear for us so that, so that we can do our job uh, and make sure that we're, we're verifying against the correct set of rules. That's all I'd ask. And thank you very much for getting the answers. It looks good. I think it's a, a good plan forward. Yeah, uh, but I, I do want to know when I'm, when I'm trying to count bricks and I'm looking at elevations and Commissioner Grant is looking at the materials that were applying the correct section of the ordinance. That's all.
And, and we will, and we'll, I'll talk with our attorney and make sure that, that what's, whatever standard we're supposed to be using is clear.
Yeah, that's all we want to know. That's all we ever wanted to know, I think.
Ruth Chair, Pulte, I'm sure their standards are going to be pretty high, right? And, and my other question is, have we lost them? When you say they haven't proposed another, another site or another recommendation, what does that mean? Does that mean they're, they've dropped out?
No, they're, they're still, they're still very much active. They, they submitted, um, that, that initial draft that you see is what they submitted to us. And, um, we had a meeting with them, I want to say, two weeks ago, you know, to discuss it and to discuss some of the parameters. And we, and our legal counsel and their legal counsel has been going back and forth. So everything's still been very active. I think this is just the one process that yeah, all the parties wanted to nail down. Cause this one process is going to dictate how the remainder of the site plan review and how everything goes and which bodies it needs to go to and what adjustments need to be addressed and made. But they're still very much coming.
Okay. Amen.
Ron, Director, I, the, the concern I have is that in a PR, if we were treating this as its own PRD, it would be our responsibility as planning commissioners to make a recommendation to the board of trustees about, uh, waiving certain design criteria, right? They have those open space. We can put the houses really close together if you have a lot of open space and there are specific requirements for when we're allowed to make that recommendation. And, and I guess I want to just reiterate my concern. I'm sure that our PUD ordinance must have had those kind of constraints. You can put a commercial property here if there's this much open space there. I, I just need to know, since, since it is an existing PUD, we won't be renegotiating it, or will we? Maybe it'll be part of the, you know, I assume we're going to be making recommendations with regard to, to zoning allowances. I just want to know, again, what, what it is we're supposed to be doing.
And, and those are some of the, the, the details that we're still trying to identify. Because some, some of it, I mean, e- even the way the PRDs work, because they're, they're a similar tool. A lot of the, like, if there are exceptions made for bulk and density standards, they end up in the exhibit Bs as a document or they're specifically called out in the language. So, so based on what's already been done, we have to look at the site plan and kind of identify what are those things that we've already considered and make sure that we're making the appropriate documentation and accommodations for them. But, but yeah, I'll, I'll make sure we work with the attorney and make sure those, that's clear.
Thank you.
And outside of the PRD, the PUD, whatever we're going with or whatever standard we're following, I will tell you that the reason why we have a planning commission and we all come from a different background and perspective is that we need flexibility. And I like to remind everybody again what our master plan had indicated. Our residents are asking for more open space, larger open space. They want smaller yards. And I believe if I remember what Pulte had presented was something like that, right? I don't remember exactly, but I remember something like that. So I just ask for thank you and the flexibility again. I'm glad to see Pulte is still viable with us.
Totally, Commissioner Atchison. I don't want to see it fall back to R1B zoning where we can't, you know, where we can't grant open space allowances or we can't shrink the lot size down to fit around the existing wet, wild lands. You know, the existing wetlands. It's really important to know which set of standards we're supposed to apply. Like Commissioner Atchison says, you know, if, if it falls back to R1B, boy, those are pretty, pretty strict. You know, there's not a lot of that flexibility that a modern development has. But we, we want to know, we want to know what we're allowed to flex on. That's it. There's not a lot of that flexibility that a modern development has, but we we want to know, we want to know what we're allowed to flex on. That's it.
It just reminded me of one more thing. The residents at Walden Wood do not want to see businesses on that corner. They want to see a neighborhood and that's why I'm embracing Polte and I'm sure their standards are going to be high.
Well, I hope I hope so. And, you know, my my biggest concern has been that cul-de-sac that is so long without a safety for people being able to get out if there's fire. I think they also need to take into consideration what their homes in the rest of Walden Wood looks like. Also, what the homes look like in Charter Club across the street. I mean, I understand smaller lots and I don't mind that, but I think we have to make sure that the quality of the homes. I know in one of the things they wanted to waive the brick. Well, brick is what makes a home look like it's going to be around for a while. So and both of those subdivisions that they're going to be backing up with have all got brick on those homes. So I think I'm not sure that I would want to waive that because I do think that it has to tie in together.
Definitely not. I'm with you there. But I think those subdivisions, weren't they built before? Like, aren't they like a lot older, those subdivisions?
No, Paul, that one, Walden Woods was the first one. Charter Club is later.
But knowing what what it is we're allowed to waive is the is really why we balked at the original request. We looked at the PUD, is it PUD, PRD, what are we, can we waive the, can we even waive that brick requirement? We couldn't tell. So that's the clarity that we're looking for from legal is what what standards do we apply?
Okay. Commissioners, any other comments? Shall we move on? All right. Thank you, Director Akers.
Thank you.
Item number three, Housing Readiness Master Plan Update, Project Kickoff. In January of 2024, Van Buren Township received a grant from MSHDA to update the township's master plan to encourage increased housing and affordability. Van Buren Township solicited a proposal from McKenna and Associates to complete the proposed work. Included in the scope is an inventorying of existing public land, completing a residential market study, evaluating our existing zoning regulations, making recommendations, drafting potential zoning text amendments, performing public engagement and identifying, excuse me, and identification of opportunity sites for missing middle housing best practices. Staff provide an overview of the proposed project and its proposed timeline. Director Power.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I will refer this presentation to Donovan Smith, who comes to us from McKenna. He's a principal planner with McKenna and is going to be taking the lead on this initial effort for the master plan update and housing study. So, Mr. Smith, please feel free to present.
There's a button. I'm just speaking to it. Okay. Thank you. Good evening, everybody, planning commissioners. Thank you for having me this evening. Thanks for hanging out with me this late in the evening.
Donovan Smith. Donovan Smith.
Donovan, okay.
Donovan Smith, and as Mr. Powers indicated, I am a planner with McKenna and I'm here to kick off the master plan, housing and zoning implementation plan this evening. So staff, Mr. Powers, can you? Thank you. Appreciate it. So just a brief overview of just some of the things I'll be covering this evening. I'll kind of give a brief introduction about the project, a little background on the MISTHA grant itself. I'll give an overview of the the project and how we are proposing to go about it. And then I'll share some important dates, the schedule of the project. And then I'll give you an opportunity to ask any questions and kind of open floor for discussion. All right? Next slide, please. So everyone knows Vidya. She is the community manager for this project. And again, my name is Donovan Smith. I'll be the project manager. So at least related to this project, I'd be giving you a lot of communication either directly in this format or or through staff. Next slide. So our approach to this project, and I'll just kind of give an overview of this project. Next slide, please. Is so in January of this year, MISTHA and the state released Michigan Housing Readiness Incentive Grant. And this is a grant to support communities with master plan and zoning ordinance updates. So that's one of the components that we did apply for that grant and it was awarded. So that's a part why we're here. But in addition to some of these objectives of that grant is to implement the master plan itself and looking at the goals and objectives that are currently in the 2020 master plan and looking at how we can address those goals via zoning ordinance updates and and housing studies and things like that. And then the last component of this project is to conduct and provide a comprehensive review of the Van Buren Township housing market and use those data findings and insights to create the recommendations that will outline the final deliverable of this project, which would be updating the zoning ordinance in alignment with your master plan and the state's housing readiness plan. Next slide, please. So again, just briefly, the Michigan Housing Readiness Incentive Grant specifically, they like to see as the outcome of these projects changes either to your zoning ordinance, so that is adopting actual zoning ordinance updates or adopting a master plan or amending your master plan. So this project, we are proposing to conduct a housing study of market data and then use that study to ultimately create zoning ordinance recommendations. But we also plan on doing conceptual design of certain sites available from the township and then applying those middle housing concepts to them. So you can kind of see in real time how the zoning changes that you are approving will play out on the sites themselves. Next slide. So just kind of a comprehensive overview of the the aspects of this planned project. Again, we start off by studying the existing land and looking at your existing master plan and zoning ordinance. We do a little bit of a diagnostic of the ordinance, looking at various components of your mixed-use districts and residential districts and can and comparing those against, again, those goals and objectives, how you can implement middle housing type typologies and developments and how we can make that process more streamlined and efficient within your zoning ordinance. We'll be conducting market research, analyzing the housing data and the characteristics of housing and how those impact economics within this housing market. We'll develop a, I don't, you'll notice that you'll see I don't title it missing middle because we're trying to put the housing there, so it's just middle housing. So when you see me, when I say middle housing, missing middle is the same thing. So we'll be be developing a middle housing plan, again, looking at, you know, the master plan, the housing types and identifying how we can incorporate those housing types into your ordinance and then ultimately adopting that zoning plan via those recommendations. Next slide. So a part of the initial study will be inventorying the township-owned land, state-owned land and other hot topic parcels or areas that would be developed. We'd be conducting the residential market analysis. There is components of public engagement in this plan. There is a little bit of capacity for a bit more. So a part of kind of what I'll be flushing out from you all is any opportunities or other mechanisms we can outreach to the public in terms of the types of goals and the types of housing they can expect to see in the future. Again, referring to the zoning diagnostic of the current ordinance and the missing middle housing types or the middle housing types and then the zoning ordinance recommendations. So your current 2020 master plan that was adopted, I think, the end of 19, if I'm correct, I'm sorry, November 17, 2020. The master plan provides your goals and vision for the future and then those translate into your goals and objectives. Your current master plan at least relates to or speaks to housing in three specific areas. On page eight, it refers to, and it's about four pages that speak specifically to missing middle housing and the desire of the township to implement more missing middle housing or middle housing typologies and types of housing within the community. Second, the second area is with is in the zoning plan. And the zoning plan actually details, and I'll speak to these a little later, you have about 14 different areas of zoning recommendations. So a part of us going through and creating the middle housing zoning recommendations will also be looking at the recommendations that are currently in your master plan and seeing if there are ways where we can also address some of those items through this work. And then the last portion of the plan that refers to housing is in your actual implementation plan. And it's maybe about five or six areas. I have a few detailed in this presentation that also speak to addressing density, allowing more middle housing types, but also addressing multifamily developments, properly locating new developments while also maintaining existing ones. But I'll kind of go into those a little later. Yep, okay. So this slide details, again, there are 14 recommendations within your master plan. The four that I pulled out are probably more specific to residential, but then there are some others. Again, these speak to looking at the special land uses within your agricultural district, the consider and inclusion of middle housing types such as duplexes, triplex and fourplexes within your residential district, looking at incentives for infield housing and then also conducting a study or reviewing information regarding eliminating your R two two-way single-family district. Again, these are just four of the 14. We are proposing to have a specific workshop with the planning commission around goals and objectives where I would actually bring all these 14 back to you and we'll go into a much deeper dive. I just didn't want to jump into all 14 in this meeting. But again, I'll refer to those a little later on. Next slide. These are your four items related to residential and housing within your implementation plan. It also comes up again in a slightly different capacity on the next two pages. It refers to your mixed-use sites and your mixed-use future land use designation. And there are also additional components of residential within those action items as well. So this is really all just to show that we're not creating these concepts or just kind of pulling these ideas out of the air. We are really trying to use the existing plans and effort and time and energy that was put into your current master plan to really drive the implementation of it and driving these action items forward. Next slide. And ultimately, the objective is how do we implement middle housing within an existing community, within an existing built environment? And your or your master plan calls out these types specifically, your duplexes, bungalow courts, fourplexes, multiplexes, townhomes and your live-work kind of mixed-use spaces. So again, these will be the types of housing we will be kind of discussing and having conversations around lot sizes, appearance, site layout, lot coverage, a lot of these kind of various aspects that the ordinance controls and then ultimately controls how others, residents or developers ultimately will bring these projects into your community. This is an example of some of the housing market characteristics that we look at when we conduct our residential market analysis. This image here is actually from the state of Michigan's housing portal where they take a lot of information, census data, and they already create a nice portal that has a lot of this data. So this is actually a copy of the status of vacant homes within Van Buren Township. But we also look at market trends such as home value, median income, the stock of housing. That's the type of units you have within the township, occupancy as well as population trends. And then we also look at other economic factors related to housing regarding employment, income, housing tenure, the age of the housing, gross rent and cost burden or the cost of homeowner cost and expenses. Next slide. And then also towards the end of the plan, like I said, we will be providing recommendations or zoning recommendations on how you can implement those middle housing strategies. So again, this is just an example of the types of action plans we've provided communities before. But again, we'll be providing a roadmap on how the township can address some of these zoning recommendations. We will be adopting some of these recommendations. Some may require more time than others, but our objective is to, at the end of this project, be adopting zoning ordinance changes that can have immediate impacts in the terms of the types of developments and projects you see in the future and coming down the pipeline. Next slide. So that's the overall project approach. So next, I'll just kind of give you a brief overview of the schedule of the project. This is a roughly 13-month schedule between, you know, kind of this month and a year from now where we'll be addressing all aspects of the project, including the job. So right now, we are in the kind of kickoff phase, just making sure the community is aware of a lot of the things that are going to be coming in the future. We'll be reaching out and speaking and providing a presentation to council within the next week, conducting a site visit within the next week, looking at various parcels that the township owns. And then after that, probably within the next two weeks ago, two weeks, we will start looking at your existing land and starting to conduct the residential market analysis. Following that, we will have, there are two workshops and we'll see that on the next slide. Or maybe the, let's jump one more after this and we'll start there. Yep. So this year, there are, there is one planning commission workshop meeting scheduled. This schedule places these dates during your active planning commission meeting. So we'll be working with staff to determine based on your caseload if it's the best time to have it during the meeting or special meeting. That's kind of to be determined, but, you know, from a baseline perspective, we are proposing with the planning commission three workshops. These will be open to the public, so there will be an opportunity for the public to weigh in and provide input. The first will be around November 13th. This would be for the goals and objectives. So again, I'll be kind of bringing back your master plan, your zoning ordinance, and then we'll have some kind of sites where we'll start to share with you so we can start to just discuss some high-level goals around housing that we would then use to kind of framework and craft what you will see at the second workshop, which will be early 2025, sometime in January. We'll come back and we will go through how those goals influence the middle housing concept. We'll kind of have some things drafted, again, some more details around framework and guidelines, and we'll kind of share that with you. And then you can provide input, things you like, things you don't like, or things we should add or embellish. Towards the end of the first quarter, so March, April, March, you can expect us for the third time and that will be to spend some time to go over the list of zoning recommendations. These would have been created based on the middle housing concepts, kind of testing what works and doesn't work and then using that exercise to actually draft a lot of these recommendations. So we'll be able to go through those sometime in March. And then April, we anticipate coming back for, to establish and set the public hearing so that we can kind of go through the final changes, final updates and revisions, have one last engagement with the public and then we'll move through the adoption phase. Can we now go back one slide? Oh, we clicked through. So I just wanted to show this shot, slide, just to show that we do have those opportunities for community engagement. We do plan on sending a survey out related to the housing goals and objectives as well as some content around middle housing types. And then there are the three community workshops. Again, that will be in this room or where to be determined. And then that will be open to the public as well as the commission itself. And now two forward. So our next steps, we are proposing to have a monthly or bi-monthly steering committee and administrative steering meetings. We are working with staff to develop the makeup of that steering We are working with staff to develop the makeup of that steering committee. Right now, we anticipate it being some staff members, myself, Vidya, as well as a member or two of the planning commission. And I think that's probably where we are right now in terms of committee makeup. But as we kind of get that sorted out, we'll make sure that communication gets to you, so you can get the final schedule and be up to date with any information that we have developed so far. And then that concludes my presentation. So if you have any questions for me, again, my name is Donovan, and I'll be here for a while, so. Thank you.
Any comments?
Looking forward to it.
All right, thank you.
By the way, will these workshops count for our two needed? Public.
What a creative question. There's an ability to find some synergy there, like yeah, with the RRC workshop we had.
Ability to find synergy? Moving, moving to corporate.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Very good presentation. We appreciate it, Donovan. Next. Karen, Tyler, thank you for sitting in tonight. I think you've done a great job. Another announcement I guess we have to make. Director Power. I just saw a blurb on the paper. It's front page today. We're sorry. From us, congratulations to you for the move forward. You have been a great director as far as giving us direction and pointing us into direction, giving us information, and at least from my standpoint, keeping me abreast of what's going on within the township and staying within the legal needs that we have to be. You've done a tremendous job and thank you. It's, we're going to be sorry to have you and, or have you gone and to lose you along the way.
Excellent to work with. It's getting late, so I'm not going to wax nostalgic too much or anything, but I just, it's been a really good group to work with. I've talked before with my colleagues and some of you about how when I grew up, I grew up in Farmington, so a little ways away, but I remember at that time kind of thinking this area, Belleville, Van Buren Township, it was a really unique place because it was kind of the first place that I recognized, kind of being outside of the metropolis of Metro Detroit, and it was kind of a fun place to check out when I was younger. And it's a really unique place and it's really cool to see that this planning commission is planning its future so thoughtfully. We're all doing a great job, so it's been good to work with you and I promise not to be a stranger. I'll make sure you have a way to stay connected and I'm sure you're in good hands. Part of why I was able to come in here and kind of keep moving things along was because of the great work people like Ron Akers did before me and having some of that continuity is going to help you out a lot and you're in good hands. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else, any comments to pass along?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. Yes.
I just want to say, Dan, I'm going to very much so miss our Tuesday afternoon. No, Dan, I think that's all the questions I have, followed by our Wednesday afternoon. Oh gee, Dan, I forgot something. Phone calls. You've been very, very patient with me and I really appreciate it and the insight that you brought to the process and knowing that there's, there's never a question I I couldn't ask, even when I, even when I, oh, I hate to ask this because I feel like I should know the answer, but Dan, could you tell me? He's always been very, there, there, Mr. Jar. This is how it works. I really appreciated it the entire time, Dan, and I think, how long, how long have you been here with the township?
A little over four and a half years.
Four and a half years, so I would also say a great job learning that Zoom during that time period and dealing with unprecedented change in how we do our meetings. I don't know that anybody else had the technical prowess to pull us through the way you did. So thank you very much and good luck in your future endeavors. And may you find synergies where you, wherever you may land.
Anyone else? Sure. I don't have a problem.
No problem.
The camera may not work after you get done taking it, but then at that point, I don't have anything else. I would entertain that elusive motion for adjournment. We have a motion to adjourn and a support.
The unanimous support.
Signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Didn't think so.